All right, let's call the meeting to a halt. The first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, thanks everybody for forthcoming. Next item on the agenda is their minutes from September 11th and January 8th. Everybody saying, "What are you doing doing minutes?" It's September 11th, it's February. We just had formatting and typo stuff, so I apologize to everybody. So is there a motion regarding the minutes of September 11th?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September 11th. You want to do it in January 8th or both together?
Let's do them separately.
September 11th as is?
A second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously approve September 11th. How about January 8th?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 8th minutes as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye? All opposed? Unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is the petition of Elizabeth Carlson, 75 Wayrally Road.
For the record, I have my hand.
Is there a reading? Would you like to make the reading since it's hot off the presses for us?
Are we doing the extension or do you want?
Madam Vice Chair, we're going in order.
Okay.
Because that's the only way I roll.
No, I'm gonna have to appoint a clerk.
You don't want to read?
No.
I beg your pardon, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Jacobs, would you mind reading?
I have nothing to read.
Yeah, I have an extra one.
This fell apart in a hurry, huh? Ms. Jacobs is appointed to clerk, is that? Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I don't think we need it, but I appreciate you playing along. Ms. Jacobs, floor is yours.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday. February, do I have to change the date and time and location for that?
Yeah, just read it, you can amend.
February 12th, 2019 at 7:30. To all parties interested in the petition of Elizabeth Carlson for property at 75 Wayrally Road, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-4.3 N4A, for conversion of a two-family home to a three-family home in the R4 zoning district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the offices of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. by order of the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Affirmative. Come on up. Thanks. Well, you're probably gonna be reading it again, so I'm gonna hold on to it. Hi, if everybody could kindly state your name and address for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Carlson, I'm at 75 Wayrally Road.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Berry, I'm the general contractor. I live in Saugus, 49 Vine Street.
Very good, thank you. All right, like I said to Ms. Jacobs, the floor is yours. Why don't you tell us what's going on in this?
A little bit about myself. Been in town over 40 years, raised my family here, been active in volunteering with the schools, cleaning, town cleanups, that type of thing. I've had this two-family, raised my family there, would like to convert it to a three-family in hopes of making it into my retirement home. There recently was a garage that tore down, and rebuilding the garage and adding a one-level apartment behind that. If you look at the plans, Rick had gotten an architect. The house is just a slapped-together 1880s house, and the architect has done a very good job of just pulling it together. Not good at public speaking, though, but, you know, working with this guy here. And would like to go forward with it.
So, and your request then is merely, all this before the Board, if I'm understanding things right, is just a special permit for a, I'm sorry, three units, is how it is?
Correct. The, it's currently listed as a two-family, and she has the required setbacks and percentage to allow her to add a third if the Board approves it.
Currently, you said currently listed as a two-family. What does listed mean in this case?
Yeah, I believe it's.
It's a legal two-family.
A legal two-family.
So we're just going from a two-family to a three-family, and the third unit, is it on the third floor, or are we splitting unit?
No, if you look at the plans, essentially, she has enough side lot and so forth to basically add a small 1,600 square foot, one-story, it's very basic, basically a suite for her.
Two-car garage, one-level apartment, one bedroom.
So let me ask you something. Your proposed building, you're going for, you have 1,700 square feet, 1,798. How big is the addition gonna be? I don't, I.
It's actually on the plans.
It is on the plans, but it's not, you're gonna make me do math.
You gotta watch out for that thing.
No, things everywhere.
Not that I'm an analyst by trade, but that's okay.
The new project area, so, let me get my big prints. The total of the square footage for the new project is 1,311 square feet.
Is that included in the garage?
Yes.
So, on here, so it's 12, 13, looking at the plan, existing building, proposed coverage, 1,798 minus 3,011 is 12, 13.
Correct.
So that's the living?
That's first floor, I'll break it down, 461 square feet for the new garage, 671 square feet for the dwelling quarters, and 179 square feet for the breezeway connection. There was some question when I spent quite a bit of time with Don Belanger, the prior building inspector, with the plans principally on with our new technology that we're using for the foundation, and so we went through this very carefully to make sure that it was qualified under the zoning requirements, and that the breezeway is not habitable space, although it will be heated.
That's huge.
Excuse me?
That's huge. And for me, it looks like building, building, so for me, I'm not seeing a design of this is a three-family, and I don't know it's, well, not, it's like, oh, there's a building, here's a building, and here's a building. So I'm not seeing it from the pictures that you're rendering, so maybe you can help me work through that to see how it looks like.
Okay. If you look at the house, what you get from street-side, what you're gonna see is the original house and a two-car garage. That's all you're gonna see. My living space is behind the garage.
A2O, point, 2.0, has the front elevation, which is what you'll see from the street, the two-car garage, and then the porch, there's currently a jalouse-sealed porch that's part of the actual building, that, a portion of that's being removed so that this becomes just a porch and that there'll be two entrances. The current entrance into the first floor, which is in the jalouse-sealed space, and then the other entrance, which is into the breezeway that connects her house to the, or her suite to the house.
So you're gonna keep the existing dwelling, the two-family, and add the addition on the back of the third family? Is that the whole of it?
To the left, no, it's to the left of the, if you look at the, if you look at SP 01, you'll see that the existing dwelling is to the right, and then the, the new dwelling's on the left.
So where's the two fam, where's the three families?
Well, we were told that in order, that this is, this is not, this is not an in-law suite, and we were told to, that, to apply as a, as a three-family.
But you have two, you have two residents in there now.
Correct.
Where are those?
This first floor and second floor.
Of the existing dwelling?
Correct, correct.
And the proposed addition is gonna be a third dwelling, a third?
Yes. Yes, it's totally separate.
So the third family is gonna be the proposed?
Well, it's actually gonna be a suite for her. I mean, it's theoretically a third family, but it's a suite for, it's being designed as a suite for her.
Is there family in the other one?
There's, she has a tenant, Carly.
It's technically a.
Right, and her son lives there, so he's gonna be living on the second floor.
So there'll be three different?
Three different entrances, yes.
And right now, the, where the garage, well, not where the garage, where the, where the new entity will reside, that's a parking area right now.
Correct. It used to be a big, there was an old barn slash garage that was in the back that we had to demolish, actually, it was really dangerous, so that was demolished. And in fact, if you, if you look on the first print that's part of your, your package, SP 101, you'll see that the footprint of the original barn slash garage is shown where the, where the back porch is on the new addition. That was demoed and has been removed. So I think the easiest thing for me to help you with this, SP 01 is obviously the footprint, you've seen these many times, the parking, the garage, if you look up in the left corner, the architect is trying to integrate the, she's rebuilding the front porch, that'll be a separate project, we'll be pulling a permit for that. So we're trying to tie everything all together so that it, it looks as if it's just one house. I mean, it will be legal.
With two different elevations, though?
Excuse me?
So you're having two different elevations, you haven't?
No.
The first, the addition is, what's the elevation of the addition?
The elevation addition will be level with the first floor, so the floors will be level.
So your roof lines are not gonna match?
Excuse me?
Your roof lines are not gonna match?
No, because the, the existing dwelling is a two-family.
Correct.
Right.
So your roof lines are not going to match?
Correct.
But the roof line will match with the garage?
Yes.
Of the, because that's gonna be a whole new addition, so you're having a building with two stories with an addition of one story.
Right, which you won't see from the street because you see the garage, so it'll match with the garage.
Right, so if you look at the S, A2O, which is the, the print? You'll see on to the right side, it says existing house beyond, that's the current existing house, it's not showing the jalouse-sealed porch, which has been removed, and then the new addition is to the left of that. And the roof line for the new addition is below the roof line of the second addition. The second, the, the original house has a flat roof as part of, section of it, and you know, aesthetically, it's not all that attractive, so the architect has essentially built this to, to match the existing house.
Over the years, the house has been added on to and different adjustments. So there's several roof lines on the house right now, and this pulls, this construction would pull the house together.
Do you have, do you have pictures in here? I thought you had put some pictures in here.
Of the current house, yes.
So these are what it is now? So again, there's, for me, that's one, two, three, and then you're gonna add a fourth tier to this house of, to your home, you're, you're just not, for me, this is not aesthetically pleasing, seeing it, because I'm, oh, that's, I'm gonna look at that, oh, that's a three-family, it looks, that's a four-family, it looks like, because I have these pods on this house, on this house, because units were added, so for me, I don't see it as aesthetically pleasing and matching. I think a little more could have been done to make it not look so botchy.
But the, are these, this rear view, the picture makes it seem like they're at different levels, but I, that might be just an optical illusion.
That's correct.
That's what I.
And all you're really looking at is the addition that was put on probably 60 years ago.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's an optical illusion, I think it's more of a pitch roof versus a flat roof. So the first part of the house is a pitch roof, the last two are a flat roof, as you said. So you're, you're not, you are not level, it's not an optical illusion, it's the roofs are different.
This is the rear of the house, and therefore, from the street, it is not, you do not see this.
But the neighbors see it, I'll drive by, I'll see it, and I'll know it, so, I mean, because you can't see it doesn't mean. I mean, we have one neighbor requesting, I should think of this one.
I think the aesthetics look pleasant.
I disagree.
What are you, what are you doing to the existing portion of the house? Any improvements on the exterior?
Yes. If you look at the, the original, the first print, SP 101, her porch is, the front porch is in pretty, pretty tough condition, rather than, we were gonna actually pull a permit and start, start that, but we thought we'd try to integrate them at the same time because the crew will be there, and we're just, instead of making a mess twice, we'll make a mess once. But the front porch is gonna be rebuilt, and just there'll be some aesthetic details to tie in both of the structures. For example, you see some of the corbels that they have, just basic stuff, but it's, it's basic from a construction perspective, but aesthetically, it makes it, it ties everything together. The objective being that we want to have the house look like, when you drive by it, it looks like it's a house with a two, two, two-car garage, and that's the objective. The back of the house will have her suite, and that will look at her backyard. Her backyard slopes down and I guess looks towards where the, all of the trailers were parked for some period of time, so, I mean, that's, she'll have a nice backyard. She has a koi pond that's gonna get relocated, so.
And it is in the budget to have fencing, so that that would be enclosed.
How is the parking working between the three units? The parking?
For the proposed?
Yeah, well, for all three units, this is, because you redoing the park driveway.
It works well, the parking to the right will be for the first floor, the parking to the left, the second floor, and then I'll have the garage. So there'll be parking for each unit for two cars.
And the park, I mean, it's our understanding of, our understanding that the parking meets code.
Okay.
Square footage.
Parking on the right?
Yeah.
So they're gonna be pulling in and turning right and parking perpendicular?
Right, yeah.
There's no.
The spaces look a little short, but I don't know.
With the design, there are now the variances, everything is, is the necessary leadway is there, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
So there are no, no variances needed, and just for the record, your front side back is to the front of your covered porch, not to the building?
I'm sorry.
The front, if you have, when you go for a permit to get your, your front porch done, your front side back, front setback is to the front of your porch, because that's a covered porch, it's not to the building. On these plans, it shows it to the building, your 11, 11.5 or 6 or whatever it is?
Yeah, this is not the permit for the, for the porch.
I'm, I'm just telling you, it would go to the porch, just.
Right.
Thank you. How many three families are there in the area? You know, there's a couple on the street where I am, I haven't researched how many are in town. Just on, on this street. I know two doors down is a three-family, three doors down is a four-family, there's, there's several multi-units on that street. Next door is a two-family. I don't have exact numbers.
Is the only thing that connects the old house with the new unit, the breezeway?
That's right, that's correct. And the breezeway is, that's how she'll access the garage. There's no entrance into the garage from her suite, into the breezeway.
Breezeway defined as enclosed, or?
It's enclosed, it's actually, it's enclosed and it's heated, but it's not, it's classified as habitable space, that's why it's listed, but it's not, she's not gonna live there, it's just, it's basically a way to connect the two structures.
It's, the breezeway is not common space, is it?
No.
Dedicated to the?
That's right. Yeah, there'll be no other entrances into that space. I think that just, you may have, if you want to just go to, just, I want to show you what we're doing, if you look at A21, because you may be curious as to what these strange-looking things are, that look like diamond piers. This is not gonna have a traditional foundation, it's actually gonna be built on what's called diamond piers or pin foundation. The reason for that is three, is actually fourfold. One, it's less expensive, two, it's less intrusive, there's no excavation required, three, we don't have to worry about water table issues, and, and the fourth thing is that it's a lot faster to build, so this structure will go up very quickly. We're not digging a big hole and having a big pile of dirt, essentially, these will be put in, we can put one of these in probably in two hours, that's how quickly they go in. It meets Massachusetts code, I have spent some, a couple of minutes with the new inspector, but prior to that, Don Belanger, who I've known for quite a number of years as he's traveled around the state, he and I, you know, he's totally, we followed all the protocols, got, she had her land, her soil tested, had a survey done, and our structural engineers completed a set of plans, so it's ready to be, if we get approval tonight, we'll be ready to, ready to build once it goes through the process.
Does this result in a crawl space, or is it no foundation, or is there?
There's no crawl space, it's, it's basically, we're foaming, we're foaming the entire structure with isocane, so basically, it's essentially, it's an encapsulated space, there'll be an opening, open area underneath the, the building itself, and it'll be closed off with skirting.
I was just thinking from a safety perspective in terms of a tornado or something, I mean, you would go to? Well, no, I'm not talking, I'm thinking about for personal protection. So you would go into your house into the basement for personal protection? Okay.
But the crawl space is, aesthetically, what are we, so the plans show one thing, but the plans are showing a crawl space, so it's showing open air. I think I heard you say that there was, is it going to be enclosed? Or are we just gonna be?
It'll just be skirted, it's not.
Skirted with like lattice work or something like that?
Exactly, yeah. I mean, you won't be able to crawl underneath it, but it's not, a traditional foundation would be a slab, or slab on grade, would be, it's, it's just a different approach, but it's, you know, very common practice.
So I think for slowing down with the questions from the Board, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna jump back in and agree with two things, but I think I'm gonna need some guidance in my, in the deployment of my imagination here, because I agree with Steve that the, the aesthetics, there are an awful lot of details in this that certainly make it pleasing, you know, from the, in the curb appeal element, curb appeal perspective. Where I struggle, and I think that this is where Ms. McIntyre was struggling, is if I look at A2.0, the top plan shows this nasty box, and I know I heard you say it's a 60-year-old addition, and there's, there's a flat roof element that shows quite plainly in A2.0, which does not show, you know, in the front, when we're looking at the plan, SP 1.0, when we're looking from, I know, proposed view from Wayrally Road, I'm not necessarily seeing that flat-roofed element, and which one is, which one am I misreading, I guess?
Well, you're not, you're actually seeing both of them. The best way for me to describe this would be to go back to SP 1.0, which is the original one, and if you look at the existing structure, the box that's to the back left has a flat roof, the rest of the house has got a traditional roof, but that, that box has a flat roof. A portion of it is, is visible from the street, what it says here, existing exterior entry is first floor unit to remain, that currently has a roof on it and it's jalouse-sealed, so it's essentially a closed-in porch, and if you look at the plan, the best way to describe it is if you look at the plan on SP 2, you'll see that what we've done is we've removed the jalouse-sealed entranceway, and it's basically created a covered porch. We could, that's, we could conceivably put a roof on that rubber roof, but that's another additional cost that you would have to incur, and it's currently just a rubber roof, and only a small portion of it is visible. The other thing I'd note is, Wayrally, as you know, most of the houses are, are on-grade, they're off-grade, so actually, if you walk by the house, you really don't see that it's a flat roof. If you drive by the house, you wouldn't even notice it's a flat roof. When you're looking at a set of plans, it's a flat roof, but you really would be hard-pressed. Now, you know, depending upon which direction the roof line would go, it would clearly be more visible, but you don't really know what's going on up there, it's not really an element that you really pay attention to. The house itself has a lot of character, and I think that with what we're doing, our intent is to really pull out that character, because it's got some really beautiful character to it, especially the porch, if the porch is rebuilt, and we add some of these design elements like the corbel and the upper, upper eve, those are the kinds of things that can really tie the two, the two units together, and that was the objective.
The breezeway is attached to that flat roof part?
It is, I, I hear you loud and clear, and, and I think where, where I struggle, because I'm not, I'm necessarily a planning board guy or an architect, is that I don't see a picture, you know, across the board, I see three, three images here, there's a, there's a bush, I think that's obstructing the element, in SP 1, there's a bush that's, look, what appears to be a bush, obstructing, you know, the very element I think that you're talking about, that's kind of the beginning of tying it in together. So I see a couple of front doors, and I see, I see a garage, but I don't see the entirety of the structure, so I look in the, in the balance of the plans, and again, just trying to get a visual from, from the street, which to me is the most important here. I, as, as, as one of the members of the Board, am far less, less interested or impressed by, you know, this, what the back of the house looks like, I, I think that that's something to talk about, but it's not something that's going to drive me. But in trying to piece, piece the street together, the street view together, you know, I'm looking around, and then I get, I get stuck, like I said in my introduction on A2.0, is I see an awfully big, flat-roofed, what, you know, the shape of this is, there's a shoebox on top of the breezeway, or behind the breezeway, it's not clear to me exactly, and that shoebox is what I'm struggling with, because I can see it here. I appreciate that you say it's not necessarily something that you see, you know, if you're, if you're walking down the street, you're not focusing on that. I can appreciate that argument. Nonetheless, in this plan, that looks awfully plain.
Okay, so, I mean, let me help you with this, my apologies for not having more pictures that would really define what's going on. The existing, the existing, first of all, that has windows in it, correct? There's a bathroom window there?
Yes.
Which is not shown, so this, it's not just a box, there's a window there, and it's, it's basically her bathroom. The existing, if you were to drive by there now, the, the existing roof line goes up much higher, so there's very little of the sidewall that's showing. We're dropping it down because from a design perspective, that element should not be prevalent, it's, it's a tie-in element for the existing garage in her.
My failing, not yours, I got shaken, shaken somewhere, when you say you're dropping the element, I didn't follow what that was.
Okay, so if you look at the pictures that were provided?
Yeah.
You'll notice that the, the porch, the jalouse-sealed porch, the roof line goes up much more, it's really, yeah. Yes, it's actually, you probably can't see it because of the bush, but it's probably an eight pitch, this is a four pitch, it's, it's not as, it's not, it's not shooting up as much because the architect decided that we couldn't have that, that element, would just be too much, so we're trying to keep it as, essentially an integrate, a tie-in element versus a part of the existing design of the, the addition.
So then, I, I'll continue to apologize one, one more time. The, if I'm looking at A2.0, pejoratively, I called it a shoebox, you know, the bathroom addition, whatever that is. Is the shape of that being changed or?
No.
Obstructed in some way, is the, the roof of the, the breezeway, the roof of the breezeway is going to intersect in the way that it's showing in A2.0, or are they not, it's not intersecting at all?
No, no, it's intersecting as exactly as you see it on A2.0. No, no, it's intersecting as exactly as you see it in A 2.0. The existing house beyond is not showing the window that's currently there. So it's, it looks like a box, but there's a window there.
And so again, I struggle with, I struggle with patching these two together.
Mm-hmm.
A 2.0, it looks, it looks prominent, you know, the, the, the element that I'm talking about.
Right.
And in SP 1, it doesn't look visible whatsoever. I can appreciate that the perspective on 1.0, there's, there's a little bit of an angle where we're looking at the house over here. So maybe I'll just ask a question. A 2.0, how wide is this, the bathroom? It looks like it's at least half the breezeway.
Thirteen six. If you look on A 1, SP 1.0...
Yeah.
The existing breezeway front is 13 foot, 13, 13 six.
That breezeway doesn't extend all the way over underneath that second floor to remain the, right?
That's correct.
The breezeway comes...
The existing breezeway...
Comes to that line, and then underneath that is the existing entrance to that space.
Right, that's correct, yes.
So it looks, it looks like, it looks like the whole thing is breezeway, but...
So if you go to, again, if you go to A, if you go to A 1.0, you'll see that we're taking away, essentially, we're taking away that space, which is being used for storage by the first, the tenant on the first floor. She has her bikes and stuff there. And we're creating a porch. So that's going to be an open porch. The entrance into the breezeway is, is set back, so there's a roof over the porch, and this, this post, and that, that's reflected in the A 02, the A 2.0. You can see that in that drawing.
So these two doors that are showing what looks like, like it's all a breezeway, the one on the left with the two side lights, that's the entrance to the breezeway.
Correct.
The other door is an existing entrance into the existing space.
First floor entrance, yes.
And that roof above that is all...
And then, and then the first floor and the second floor have common entrances on the front, on the porch. So there's two entrances to both. And she has a, there's a back entrance from the second floor.
The architect's intention was really to pull together a house that, as you said, there's a shoebox here, there's a, you know, there's a porch put on here.
Sorry, I'm a little confused. Maybe I missed something. So I'm looking at the front picture, and I'm seeing the porch is one-way, but then the insert of the porch is different.
Oh, he gave me two different answers.
And then the porch on the front of the actual drawing itself is different than the porch that is currently there.
So the, the design elements that are on the first SP 1.0, 1.0, are just, essentially, the architect is an illustrator. And so what he's doing is he's saying, we can do these different things. The actual design for the, the corbels and so forth hasn't been decided yet. So for example, it might be these, the upper, you'll see these upper details.
And I...
The porch itself is, that's the way the porch is going to be built.
I could be wrong, Ellen would be able to correct me on this. I don't know if that, because, so what you're saying though is that the porch that's here, in this picture right here, isn't the porch that's currently there. The porch that's currently there is what's in this picture.
That's correct, because it's not part of this project.
Does that fly?
That's a totally separate permit.
For us to approve, no, I...
It's already an existing structure, so the setbacks are already existing, they're not adding to that.
Right.
So the structure which I pointed out to them would be from the front of the porch, not to the house.
Right.
So it's not the front of the house setback? Is that what you're asking? It's not 11.5 feet?
I'm just wondering if we were to use this plan tonight, where this plan doesn't actually articulate what's there based off the porch, that's an issue.
So I think stating it a little differently, can we approve something that's not actually the plan?
There you go.
This is a, this is a render, it's not a natural...
It's really not part of this, this request. The front porch is not part of this request.
They're just asking to change the...
We're just saying, this is how we're going to tie the two together.
Okay.
That's a separate, we could, we could be building it now, we, in fact, if it was the weather, we thought we weren't going to be able to dig, we could have been digging out for, for footings. So we could have been, could have been doing that, it's a totally separate project, just a renovation. But this, this structure is where we need a variance.
Special permit.
That's right, thank you.
You don't need a...
I always get the define. Valerie explained that to me several times.
I did.
Depends on where you are, cities, variance.
Are you doing a technicality on this?
What?
There's a lot of it.
I'm learning from the vast.
Any other questions from the board? Concerns, comments? We will certainly have an opportunity for public comments, and then there can be additional questions, I don't want you to think that this is the end of the road. But we can certainly carry on. Any further questions? Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, seeing and hearing none, we did receive a letter. It may make some sense, Madam McIntyre, if you'd read the letter into the record.
Do I have to read the entire thing?
Oh, I know, it's an exhausting two paragraphs.
I was just talking about who it was from, who it was addressed to. "This office is representing JY Realty Trust, the abutters to the above application. JY Realty Trust is a record owner of 83 Waverly Road. After reviewing the plans and supporting documents for the project, the only concern raised by my client is the need for screening along the side of the property which borders their property. As such, the owner of 83 Waverly is requesting that the zoning board of appeals require in any approval that screening could be conditioned as part of the decision. The owner of butter would prefer a row of evergreens be planted rather than a fence. Thank you in advance for your consideration." Richard Byers.
Interesting.
So you said you were putting a fence in there.
In that back V, in my pri...
In the back V?
My private area.
Up to where? Up to where your house is going, or...
No, if you, you see how my lot is very angled?
Yep.
Just a privacy fence in the back, because that's my living space, like around the area of where the garage...
The backyard.
The backyard, the backyard, I would like to have fenced in.
Yeah, where the driveway is. Actually, I'm, I'm quite sure, I know exactly what they're asking.
Oh, oh, go up towards the front of the house.
Yeah, they want, they want along the front of the house. The house that's next to this, which is not shown on the plans, is actually further out. It's kind of, it's, it's interesting. And that driveway is literally on her property line.
The precipitias I have there are very ugly.
That's interesting.
That is very interesting.
Interesting that they require some screenings, some privacy, I mean...
No, it's just...
No, the evergreens.
Well, because you're going from, these people are used to, I can't...
Their lot, their property's a lot lower though, that's what's interesting, so it's ready to...
But they're just used to dwelling so far away, and then you're putting...
Yeah.
A double dwelling on the, on the property.
Yeah, it was going towards the front though, so it wouldn't affect the dwelling at all.
Yeah, they don't live there, they are...
And there was a building there that's been removed, so there was a mark.
There was a report, I had to...
Right.
There was a building there.
In the back.
So it looks like it's just going to screen the parking area.
That would be, yeah. Where this building's going now. It's a rental, actually, the whole, it's, it's not a, it's not an owner occupied property. It's rental, very interesting.
Yeah, that's what it indicates, but I just wanted to be clear that I knew where the trees were supposed to go.
There's a large old tree that's, that's...
Very large.
Looked like it was going to screen the parking area.
Keeps having it trimmed.
Did you, did you, was this a barn? We were just asking.
Yes, yeah.
So where this addition is going, there was a barn when?
Up until last year.
Yeah.
A barn that I actually used for parking.
I want to be clear, when, when Ellen says where this is going, I'm, I'm looking at this document.
Yes.
And it said there's a dilapidated wood garage outlaid...
Yeah.
Back, back in, in the backyard.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
Is that the barn?
We called it, it actually was a barn at one point, then it, I mean, for purposes of the, for the...
Got it, I just wanted to place it...
And it's, it's shown.
Because when Ellen asked the question, is it where your building is going, and the reality is no, the barn is way further in the backyard.
Right, and it actually...
The barn is not, the, the addition is not replacing the barn.
And the, and if you were to, you know, if we were to do a topographical representation of this, this, her property drops off significantly if, if you go off the deck. So the, the barn actually had a, almost a nine foot, you walk in, it was almost nine feet up. So it drops down significantly in the back of the eye. And it was, we pulled a permit to, to take it down because it was dangerous.
So what this is doing, the proposed addition is actually bringing living space about 40 feet closer to your abutter. You're well within the setbacks, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I'm just, just exploring what the, what the request is here from the abutter. And because living space, including the garage, is coming 40 feet closer to their, to the lot line, they're just asking, asking for some, some evergreen screening. Is, is that something you foresee to be a challenge?
I think that's a very nice request, I, I'm very agreeable to that.
Okay.
Something specific as to how far back they wanted to go.
Well, there's a big tree, so I'm not taking the tree down, that's for sure.
Well, that may be, what, what it may be worth is, since I can't read minds, you can't read minds, but we could certainly put a condition, as a condition, that there be some evergreens along the, the lot line, or some screening. I guess perhaps I would ask you to, to get in, and connect, to connect with Mr. Byers, see what he actually has in mind, and then kind of have a, have a meeting of the minds.
Absolutely.
I'd love to never see this again, frankly, so I, I hope it doesn't come back.
That's not even an issue. We're going to be doing some grading here anyway, because it's just, it's in tough shape.
Thank you.
Not an issue.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Should we, who's voting?
It would be Steve.
One, two, three, four, Steve, all, all the way to our...
The wrong.
Go to our good friend.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
All right.
Sorry.
Brief moments in the sun.
Steve was here first.
So if there are no further questions, then shall there be a motion to close public comment, move to deliberation?
Sumoed.
Second.
Motion made, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all in favor, so we'll move on to deliberations. Any thoughts? Feel free to fire them out there so that we can...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start. In all honesty, when I first looked at this, I thought it was a sleight of hand kind of thing. Like, it was actually another house being built, and the only thing that made it a three-family was this breezeway that connected it. And so it was just kind of a way to skirt, subdividing the lot into another house. However, that was my first inclination. Yeah, so my second inclination is, if, there's, again, there's no variance required, so if there was only going to be a garage being built, we wouldn't be here, right? Because you'd have every right to build a garage without involving the ZBA, right? And if it was just a garage with a breezeway, we wouldn't be here. So the only reason we're here is because you're going to have living space in the back that nobody will see from the street, and doesn't affect the, the appearance of the property, because the garage is what you'll see from the street. So to me, that makes a lot more sense. You know, I could argue that it's very efficient to put another person on a lot without, you know, taking a whole other lot for a person, so, yeah, to me, if, if, this is not much of an addition to worry about, just because the garage would have been there anyway. I don't think I articulated that well, but hopefully you've got it.
I got it.
Thank you.
I think that the, the intensity of the addition is what I think what you're, what you're most commenting on here, is that it doesn't appear to have a tremendous impact.
To me, it's incidental. I mean, again, the garage would be there, and we wouldn't have this meeting. So the fact that you're adding behind the garage, all right, is, is kind of incidental. The garage is going to be there whether, you know, they can do that without our approval.
I'd add on to Rod's comments. As I, as I look at the property today, what I see is a bunch of cars. I think this is nicely done. I think this is a, I think that on Waverly, it will be an enhancement to what is there today.
Definitely agree with that.
I, I think it's an improvement to what's there, and I know there's been some talk about, it looks like it's this block and this block, but I, I was trying to look at it and how you might add a third unit to it in a way that might be more compatible than looking like different blocks, but I, I wasn't seeing that. I, I think the way they're doing it is actually going to be better than if they added a third floor, or did a attached townhouse, or that sort of thing. I think this will be a bit more of an improvement than, than that. The house was a little bit awkward in a way to just add a unit on, so handling it the way they are, I think is a more attractive option.
That's great, thanks. Anything else, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. McIntyre? If you're shaking your head as well, Ms. Jacobs, then I'll, I'll offer a quick comment.
I think I'm shaking my head as well.
All right. So the, the comments that I have is, this feels like, like about as square with the call for additional dwelling units in, in kind of lower-impact ways as kind of can, can occur. So kind of piggybacking on, onto your respective points. You're putting a dwelling unit in the back, it can't be seen from the street, it is another, it is another dwelling unit, and the town, the town, the Commonwealth, it seems like the universe is asking for more dwelling units. And this does appear to be a terrifically effective way of adding a dwelling unit and not having a parking issue. I am, I look at this and say, man, I wish all of our parking problems could be solved this, this artfully. I mean, this just feels just about easy, like that, that parking is a, is a no-brainer. So I, I think you're, you're lucky in some regards that you got a nice wide mouth here, here at the, the street level. So I'm a guy who says, in, in spite of my struggle with, with the bathroom box, you know, the balancing all of the other, you know, positive features of this, you know, feels, feels like a terrific application, feels like a thoughtful application as well, to the, to the extent that we have, you know, a single public comment that shows that either people are disinterested or in tacit agreement with you. So if we have one comment that says we're in support, but we'd like a couple of trees, and I've heard the applicant loud and clear say that's not a problem, again, I wish that our problems were so easily solved on a monthly basis here, here at the board. So I, I don't think I, I have anything else, unless there's a closing question, comment, concern. Then perhaps there should be a motion.
I'll make a motion. I will make a motion to grant this, excuse me, I actually have two now. I'll make a motion to grant the special permit pursuant to nothing over zoning bylaws, section 195, 4.3 and 4A, from conversion of a two-family home to a three-family home in the R4 zoning district for property located at, petition of Elizabeth Carlson for property at 75 Waverly Road, map 018.0, parcels 0061, North Endover Mass. And I am going to reference subject property photo, since we, we were looking at this quite a bit. I'm also going to reference the plot plan done by John Abganas?
Yeah.
What, Abganas and Associates, that was done on, I think it's dated...
January 10.
Is it?
January 10.
Who's that? January 10, 2019. I am also going to reference this plot plan, I don't know, the registry survey and plan done on January 10th as well. I'm also going to reference the, the architect plans, SP 1.0, A 1.0, A 2.0, A 2.1, A 3.0, A 3.1. And I'm going to also put a condition on that, that the applicant puts a screening on the, reference the rights on the, is that west? On the south side, for JY, JY Realty to have a, let me think how I want to say, there's a screening along this side of property. let me think how I want to say this, a screening along this side of property. Preferably a row of evergreens. Oh, how can I reference this? That puts this so that it goes far enough away, away with.
Back to the addition?
No, the addition front is the.
No, to be parallel to the back of the addition?
Extending to the beginning of the fence.
Up to the fenced area? A screening of evergreens or similar. I don't, you know what? If it's specific to evergreens, you have other greens that are screening.
Live longer.
Yes.
Live longer.
Are similar, that would provide some privacy to the abutter. And hopefully you can work something out with Attorney Byers.
Any comments of the motion? Anyone need an additional condition?
Anyone want to elaborate on that? I'm making a little clerical, because it's a little tough. You have to, it's a gray area.
Valerie will make it up in the decision.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's go through, down the line.
I vote in favor.
That's an aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, I'm an aye, so unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of letters from, I just gave you.
Thank you. We'll make sure we have evergreens.
I have no idea.
Thank you. Let's, let's move on to the fourth matter on the agenda, the extension, David Cronin, 234 Dale Street.
I was so, I was so taken back.
Thank you.
All right, you know what? I have a tissue in my hands.
Thank you so much.
I'll shake you twice.
I'll be back.
Have a good one. This is just because I want to be a case.
Counselor, good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Pleasure to be here.
It got deep in here in a hurry. What, what do you, what do you got tonight?
So, I'm, I'm not sure. I know there's been some turnover on this board. I know a lot of you weren't here. This was on Dale Street, David Cronin. He needed a, he needs a special permit from the planning board, because he's in the watershed district for an expansion of his, of his home. And we obtained a number of variances. In fact, I believe this was the first matter that Valerie worked on, the first application she took, when she just started. Yes. But in any event, there were a few dimensional variances, and most significantly, it's, it was a really small home, and there was a, a size limitation as to the size of the expansion in the watershed district. So, there was also a variance to exceed the 50% threshold by which you could expand the square footage. The variances were all granted, right around the time when this application was approved. You may recall, Mr. Cronin's wife had a, had a baby, he had moved out into some temporary housing. He was put on a grand jury, he's self-employed, all kinds of things, things were going on. His engineer has since retired. He's still considering whether or not he's gonna proceed with the special permit filing, but we're up against the year. Under the variance, it's only good for a year. You can get a six-month extension, one six-month extension by statute, assuming it's, it's approved by the board. If this were approved, he's still not 100% sure that he's gonna proceed, just because a lot of things have happened also in, in the market in terms of construction costs, expense of the project. But in discussing it with him, I, I suggested, you know, you put so much effort into it already, why don't we try to get just the extension? And you can decide if you want to proceed. If the extension were granted, within the next six months, you'd have to apply for and get a special permit from the planning board, and then proceed with, with the project.
Me myself, I never see any problem with granting the one-time extension. I understand life happens.
Mm-hmm.
Happens for a lot of us, so I have no issues with an extension.
I also have no issues.
Just out of curiosity, though, the, you have a dumpster, he has a dumpster in his backyard. What is that dumpster there for? I mean, it almost made me wonder like there was work underway.
I'm, I'm not 100% certain. I can, I can find out if, if it's anything. I would guess that it's probably just in cleaning out the house. He hasn't, no one's been living in it for a year. He's either gonna be proceeding with the project, or he, he would be preparing it for sale. So just a guess is that it would be cleaning it out, because he's going one way or the other. I mean, he, there isn't any work that he, that he could be doing.
I just saw the dumpster, and I thought maybe there was some construction underway.
No.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none. Any final words, or shall we close public comment, move to deliberation? Let's, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, close public comment.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
None opposed, so that's unanimous deliberation.
I'm gonna go right for it.
Right to the motion?
Right to it, unless anyone wants to deliberate.
I don't need to deliberate. Vice Chair, Captain?
I'll make a motion to grant the request for a six-month extension on the property located at 234 Dale Street, applicant David Cronin.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The roll, same roll?
Same roll.
Same roll?
Yes.
There's an aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, all in favor, all five ayes, so that's unanimous.
We'll see you next month. What else do you have for another extension?
I think I'm all out of extensions now, so. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Have a good one.
So next item on the agenda is the, the rule change that we talked about a month or two ago, whenever it was. This is an item, rule changes need to come before the board twice, so if anyone has any second or additional thoughts, now is the time to air them out. Otherwise, perhaps there should be a, a motion.
I don't want to make the motion.
I'll move to accept the rule change. Is that formal?
I'll second.
I think it's motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None opposed, so the second reading has passed.
So I can update that now, instead of get rid of the milar to us, can the applicant, when they go do their application, and it requests milar, I can take that out now?
Yes. To the, to the, just, just to be clear, are you able to go in and edit the application to?
No, it's not an application, it's just an application checklist.
Yeah.
About everything they need to do, and one of them says milar.
And the checklist is something separate from?
It's just a piece of paper.
Separate from this?
Oh, it's not that?
Well, this, this also includes references to milar, so we need this, whatever this document is.
You can figure it out, yeah. I think I only have a PDF of that, but we can figure it out.
Okay.
Whiteout.
Yeah. It can be blacked out.
Is it texted?
No, you can do those programs that they.
Convert it to Word and then change it.
Text lining, is that what it's called, actually?
I don't know what it's called, but I do.
Last item on the agenda, our board elections, finally, it is February. It is February after all. No, we didn't do it. So where, where we were last time, we can, we could just, like, we can either, if anybody want, if anybody wants a job, oh, yeah, bring your hand, it'll be yours, I promise you. If anybody wants, wants this, it, it is theirs. I'm happy to serve, also happy to hand off, again, my expectation, and I think the Board of Selectmen's expectation, is that there will be a rotation, and everybody will accede to this, because I certainly don't want it for a lengthy period of time.
I don't want to.
There's an expectation, among the, the Board of Selectmen wants everybody, is, is leading that expectation, like, when you have your interviews and all that kind of stuff. It's my understanding, I could be wrong, that the board is saying that everybody's gonna, gonna have a chance. So, no more, no more Mr. Kouchas who says, no chance, because he can say no chance, he's grandfathered in to the no chance. You've already done your time, Madam Vice Chair, so you're, you're safe.
I might want to do it again.
I would love that.
By all, by all means.
You can have my turn.
Associate members aren't at risk for this, are they?
You never know. Don't even supplement anything.
The, 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 the risk is only over time, so.
You get sucked in.
I think if you stay an associate for two or three years, then you're absolutely going to be eligible. I think everybody after a couple of, couple, a few years. It's a different era.
Feel very comfortable with the officers we have now, happy to retain.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I mean, just, just a note on, on taking, I mean, when you guys were interviewed, it is a prestigious position. Really, it is. You're a chair of a board, a lay-in use board. You have a cattle, and just, you get to talk all night. So, and it's also a lot of work. There's a lot of behind the scenes, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff that you don't see what Paul has done to get that in place. You know, the moves and regs and looking at them, it's a lot of your time.
And we don't see what Valerie does. From here, we don't necessarily see what Valerie does either, and, you know, when, when you have this thing, and Valerie is nagging you for, for something.
And the texts, and the texts back and forth, and the calls. Inquiring.
Yeah, nagging.
Nagging suggests that I haven't delivered yet.
Nagging.
Means that you're asking for the second, third, or fourth time.
I haven't, you haven't seen nagging.
That's because I tried to stay, I tried to deliver before we get to nagging.
You're about to.
But he also says, I'm just, like, he's also dealing with somebody who didn't come from zoning, so, and, you know, so we've had, we've gotten there. We're getting there. We, we'll never be perfect, as I said. Well, he strives for perfect.
I don't endeavor to perfect.
We're getting there, but I don't know.
Incremental improvement is all I see. So with, with that, everybody might be off the hook this year, but next year might be a different conversation, Mr. Fagan.
I don't have seniority.
Ms. Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs has seniority.
I have toddlers, I tell them, that has to exclude me.
You might be grandfathered.
How long can there be toddlers?
If I have my way, eh, the next 30 years.
Long enough for me to retire. All right, so with that, I guess we need a motion nominating officers.
I'll make a motion to keep the, the officers as is. Paul as, as chair, myself as vice, and Ellen as secretary.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, might as well do the, do the, do the roll. Motion made and seconded. Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 I get to vote?
Aye.
So, you know what? So we just said, honestly, that during voting, that everyone should vote. So prior administration, they required just the.
Primary.
Primary people to vote. I've always liked everyone, because everyone's a member of the board, whether you're the chair or an associate, doesn't matter, you're a member of the board. You're here, your time's here, you're, you're in the room.
You put up with the, you know.
So I get to vote two meetings in a row. So, you're good.
All right, motion made, seconded, and there were all ayes. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.